Good evening, I'd like to call to order our meeting of April 8th, 2015. Our first item of business is roll call and we have Mr. Mullis, who's unable to be here tonight, and Mrs. Burns, who will be here not for executive session but shortly thereafter. Thank you. And if you'd like to join us, please, in fudge allegiance. The flag is this way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's see. We are going to go into executive session for a few minutes from which we will return. So I would, we are going to, just, I'm sorry, just one second. Okay. We're going to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel and to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiation with non-union personnel. So we move to, enter to executive session for the purpose of what I just said. Thank you for that purpose. Second. Second. All right, all those in favor, roll call vote. Mr. Bjork?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonish?
Yes.
Mrs. Brusad?
Yes.
Let's see, Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane? Yes. So we will be returning. Thank you. Now we have to find the executive session room. Tonight's gonna be fun.
I know.
It's nice to see everybody. And we're all learning this new room tonight, so together. So it's good to have some compadres here. We'll go back to items, approval of items by consensus. Warrants. The first three warrant articles, everybody, oh, and letter E, okay, we can do those. I entertain a motion for approval of the minutes, March 25th, 2015, regular session, approval of out-of-state overnight field trip for Decker International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Florida, warrants G410, R213, and warrant sped 14. Mrs. Bonish? So moved. Thank you. Second, Mrs. Brusad. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, Kim? And the other warrant would be payroll, I moved a motion for approval of payroll warrant, 32515.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll, warrant payroll, 32515.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonish. Second, Mrs. Brusad. Hey, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to keep remembering that you're the Mr. Bjork.
I'm amazed you forget.
I'm sorry. It's hard to get used to the which ways who's going right now. Okay, all those in favor? No, 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 no.
Oh, none.
One, two, three in favor, two abstain, which would be Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. Okay, thank you. There we have that. Our next item of business, student representatives report. Welcome, I hope you like your new seats.
Yeah, thank you.
This is Emma and Stephen.
So, this Friday, April 10th, the junior class of 2016 will hold their junior prom at Tewksbury Country Club at 7:00 PM, and the strings attached students will visit the State House on Monday, April 13th with Director Liz Erman to perform.
The strings attached will also be traveling to Italy to perform over April vacation from April 17th to April 26th. And Wilmington High School SAD students are working alongside Wilmington Fire and Police Department to prepare for Operation Safe Prom's mock crash, which is gonna be held on Wednesday, April 29th.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone have any questions about these? We're always busy at the high school. Thank you, that's, that's great.
Thank you.
All right, our next item of business then would be the superintendent's report. Superintendent Delai.
Yes, thank you. Brief report, just to let the committee know that on April 17th, Friday, April 17th, from 7:30 AM to 1:40 PM, we will be having the annual Wilmington Middle School Analog Device Technology Fair. It has special memory for me because that was the day of my interview last year, and that was an event I was fortunate enough to attend, so it's all coming back around again. The, the event is actually in rooms 247 and 248, those are the tech ed rooms, and so hopefully if anybody's interested in coming and seeing that event, just let us know.
I have never missed one. I think it's one of the, I think it's one of the most unique programs that we have, and at some point towards the end of the year, if we have time, I'd love to have them come in and explain it to people.
Sure.
That, that, what they do. It's excellent. And I would just like to make a comment that you're still smiling a year later, so that's very good for us, we're happy about that.
We do have vacation, as you know, the week of April 20th, our break, and then I just wanted to let you know, have you voted on the 29th, but it looks like the last day of school, though it did snow today, will be June 18th for all schools, June 19th for the high school.
Oh, my God. People all around us will be jealous.
Yes, I don't talk about our last day of school in superintendent circles these days.
Excellent.
That's it for my report.
Oh, thank you. We have some visitors tonight, so we're gonna take our agenda out of order, and we'll go first to the, it's, it's actually under new business, so the first thing would be the athletics report. So we'd invite Mr. Harrison to come join us at the table.
Where do we go?
That's what we hadn't decided.
Either side.
Either side, whichever looks, yeah. Next time we'll have the, we'll put that other. Good evening.
All right, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to mention some of our athletic highlights and some of our All-Stars from the fall and the winter seasons. From the fall, our boys soccer team finished first in the Middle Sex League for the third consecutive year. And All-Stars, we had Evan Rafi, Kevin Goncalves, Ryan Horgan, Ryan Consola, Patrick McFaul, and Evan Rafi was also a Lowell Sun All-Star. Our girls soccer team finished first also for the fourth consecutive year. All-Stars were Devon Malatesta, Casey McFaul, Kayla McCauley, Stephanie Figurito, and Christina Espinos. Devon Malatesta was also a Lowell Sun All-Star and a Boston Herald All-Scholastic. On the football team, we had Middle Sex League All-Stars, Ryan Flood, Matt Penny, and Austin Ferreira, and Ryan Flood was also named to the Lowell Sun All-Star team. From field hockey, we finished second in the Middle Sex League, second to Watertown, who was a perennial state champion. They've been the state champ for, I think, seven of the last 10 years, so it's not a bad thing. Our All-Stars were Lauren Fitch, Melissa McNamara, Bethany Kane, Courtney Bolus, and Carolyn Albanese. Lauren Fitch was also a Lowell Sun All-Star. Volleyball, Hannah Brown was, was an All-Star. In cheerleading, they finished second in the Middle Sex League Chairman Competition and also third in the Division III State Competition. In the winter, our basketball team, our boys' basketball team made the tournament for the first time in a few years. We had a Middle Sex League Most Valuable Player, Connor Bennett, who was a Boston Globe All-Scholastic and scored his 1,000th point in his last game of his high school career. It was a great feat. Girls' basketball, we had Amber Peach, was a Middle Sex League All-Star. Boys' ice hockey, Stephen DeFuria was an All-Star. Wrestling, we had Fox Maxwell, Alan Rapansy, and Sam Jennings were also All-Stars. Winter track for the girls, we had Cecilia Chase, Samantha Pitsy, Julia Gaik, Elizabeth Olson, Danielle Baldi, were all Middle Sex League All-Stars. And for the boys, we had Ben Rodenheimer and Erin Spurlanga were All-Stars, you know, for that, for the boys' winter track. And our girls', you know, cheerleading team finished first at the league meet at Central Catholic. One other thing that I wanted to mention, obviously we are into the, we are in the spring season, I think that's what they call it.
It's been extremely challenging, to say the least.
Tennis, track, and lacrosse teams have all started. Boys' and girls' lacrosse started today, they were outside there, Kathleen, in the snow. Baseball and softball, hopefully will get underway next Wednesday. I guess DPW mentioned that they're gonna start working on some fields, hopefully Monday, for the baseball and softball. So it's definitely, you know, been different. They've been around a long time, and I don't remember ever a start of a spring season like this. One other thing I'd like to mention is we had two recipients from the Girls and Women in Sport Day that was held last Friday at Daniel Hall. We had Lauren Fitch and Abigail Chase were our two representatives, along with their moms, Helen Fitch and Becky Chase. And it was a great day, it was a great honor for, for the girls. And I was just, you know, mentioning earlier that one of, one of the speakers was Mary Pratt. I'm not sure if anybody remembers Mary Pratt. She was one of the girls on the Girls American Baseball Team from World War II. She's 96 years old, and she speaks every year. And she got up there and she started singing the song, if you remember it from the, from the movie. And they got up there, had all the girls singing. Just an amazing woman, you know. It was a great day, you know, for our girls. And the only other thing that I would like to, to mention is our, and I'm sure, I'm sure if anybody has any questions on the summer camps, we were gonna have them here at the high school. We've decided to go back to the middle school. For those of you who tried to come in here and park, I'm sure Paul and I have a different feeling of, you know, the parking here, but I think it'd be a better opportunity for everyone to be back at the middle school, you know, to get those programs underway. And we'll be starting those Monday, June 22nd. So I'll be able to, you know, have the flyers, I'm gonna try to have those out, get those to the schools tomorrow, so hopefully they go out by Friday, 'cause I know there's been a lot of, you know, parents, you know, calling. I know Kate has gotten quite a few inquiries about, you know, the, you know, the program. So we should be off and running, you know, hopefully by the end of the week.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Mrs. Carroll? First of all, I would like to thank all the coaches and the assistants. They work really hard, the dedication to all the teams. I can't believe the hours that they spend with these, with our children, which is great. Your coaches and assistant ones, they have, they get Cory check, right?
Yes.
And now are they gonna have to do the fingerprinted, too?
I believe so, yes.
Oh, good. Okay, great.
They're all, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any other? We were thinking, Mr. Harrison, we missed, we used to come every once in a while, and so we were thinking, starting now, that we'd have you come at the end of each season.
Sure.
So that, because we have so many sports teams, which is wonderful, but each season we always have somebody in every sport who's outstanding, and then we have wonderful teams, the teamwork and everything, so it's nice to just recognize them.
Sure, no, that's why when, when I get, you know, called through the winter, I wanted to make sure I mentioned, you know, the fall.
And you know, the other thing I'd like to say is, I know we're close, I've been having people say things to me, too, about, you know, like moving it back to the middle school for a year or different things. And my, my answer is, we've come really a long way to get kids into a high school. It's really, yes, it's finished, but then there's those little things, it's not quite together.
Right.
And so while it's frustrating for us, next year at this time it'll all be settled, so just, just have to wait a little while.
Obviously can't wait.
Yeah. Mr. Regiro?
Yeah, part of the reason for moving it back to the middle school is, starting on June 22nd, the campus will kind of be taken over again by Gilbane and so forth, there's a lot of planting that need to happen, a new driveway near the Roman House and so forth, so there'll really be no access, it'll be very difficult to get into the site. So that's really the driving factor behind that, that, you know, rather than trying to deal with drop-off pickup where people park, it's, it's safer to be at the middle school for this, this year than next year if school comes back, yeah.
And the other factor, too, is they're beginning to do the reconstruction of the Glen Road Wildwood Middle Sex Intersection.
Yeah.
They're, they've been surveying for the last week or so, so construction will begin probably about the same time our camps are beginning, quite possibly, which will lend another bit of confusion to the area, so.
Exactly.
Especially have a lot of younger kids that participate, so their parents wanna bring them in.
Yes.
You know, so, and there's no place, you know, there's really no place to park. They'd be parking at the student parking lot, walking them across, you know, so I think it would be in the best interest, you know, to be back at the middle school for one more year.
Absolutely.
One more year only.
But we're lucky we have the middle school to go to.
Yes, absolutely.
We might have to cancel the program, so that's not happening.
Absolutely.
That's good. Thank you, we really appreciate your report.
No, no, thank you.
Congratulations to all our student athletes.
All right.
Sure. Okay. Okay, and our second presentation, school climate and culture presentation? We're gonna have to figure out. Oh, good, just two.
And I would like to thank Ms. McMiniman, as well as Mrs. King, who are gonna represent the Wilmington Public Schools Climate and Culture, School Climate and Culture Committee, but also recognize with our other, other committee members, Mary Hood, our Administrator of Special Education, and Laura Stinson, who is our K-12 PE Health Liaison.
So, good evening, and thank you for having us. We'd like to sort of give you an idea of where we're at as a committee, and since Mrs. King and I have been part of the committee since the inception, back in 2010, when the bullying law came into effect, we thought it would be best if we could share with you sort of where we've come from. And we would like to thank Mrs. Laura Stinson and Ms. Mary Hood, who are present, they've been members of the committee for quite a long time, and we'll talk about the other members of our committee when we get forward in the presentation. So if, in your presentations, you can take a look at our Wordle, and I put this Wordle on the presentation before I knew that Superintendent Delai liked Wordles.
Yeah.
So if you can see some of the words that jump out at you, this is really representative of the direction that our committee is headed into. And we have expectations of how we want our students and the adults in our school communities to interact with each other. And we look at words like motivators, and pride, and vision, and attitudes, and optimism, caring, and trust, and that's what we, we as Wilmington Public Schools really want to be all about. And we have worked as a committee to build empathy within our students, and we, as a group, are working to promote a strong culture within the Wilmington Public Schools. And a couple of other words that stands out, you know, finding things in common, making connections, resolving conflict, model appropriate behavior for all of our students. So some of those words also jump out at you in the Wordle. So we can talk briefly about the history of the committee. As I mentioned, we were established in July of 2010 as a district-wide bullying prevention committee, and in that very first summer, when the law came into effect, we developed procedures and protocols for reporting, investigating, and documenting bullying allegations and incidents within the district, in each and every school, and sharing that information from school to school as the students travel from building to building. So we really were quite ahead of the curve, actually, that summer, and we had many districts contacting us as we were complete with our forms, and they wanted to borrow our forms as a template, and we were welcome to share with all of that. Initially, we talked about establishing a kindness week, and we established that in January of each year, and we've continued with that throughout the years, and it actually coincides with No Name Calling Week here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So it's a nice tie-in for students. We have completed the required biennial, biennial review, that's every two years, of the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. We are currently sort of working on making sure that is completely aligned to our policy. That's one of the tasks that's our committee has divided into subgroups, and that's one of our subgroup's tasks. And really, the big piece is here, that the committee oversees educational programming for students on topics of recognizing bullying behaviors, the power of bystanders supporting targeted students, and fostering a culture of accepting our differences. And really, those are the most critical pieces of the law that we are sort of charged with following through with. The education of students and staff, the prevention techniques and strategies, curriculum, which we'll talk about in just a bit, and review of the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan, as well as the documentation, documentation and tracking that the state requires from us at the end of each year. So, as we mentioned, we have some of our members here with us, but I would like to recognize the members also on this year's committee, and several have been with us for quite a few years, and a few are new faces. And Carolyn Athens is one of those, she's a classroom teacher at the high school, Special Education. Kathleen Cheller is a parent based out of the north, but she has parents, students in several schools. Doreen Crowe is our nurse facilitator, and she is a district-wide representative. Lisa King, as we mentioned, one of our principals. Mary Hood, the Administrator of Special Education. Myself as chair. Joe Newhouse, who's a parent, representing the parent group, as well as the CPAC. And Dennis Shaw, another principal in district. Rosangela Roman is a classroom teacher at the middle school, and Laura Stinson, who we introduced earlier. So it's really a nice representation of all of the buildings, and both building-based and district-wide personnel. And we really have become a supportive group, that we share resources from videos, to research, to links, to studies around bullying, and, and we share them out with principals and other staff. And we really are similar in the fact that we are hoping to name a co-chair by the end of the year, who's a teacher, that would be a teacher from this committee, that would be able to step up into a leadership role and co-chair the committee with me, as many of the other committees in the district do, such as the Safety Committee and the School Health Advisory Council. So we wanted to talk a little bit about some of the bullying prevention education that we do across the district, and Mrs. King is going to share some of the events and activities.
And, so, you know, it looks different in different schools based on grade level and, and what's developmentally appropriate for our students. So in the early childhood, there's, you know, a lot of curriculum-based units, our Wilmington Community Kindness Pause and Be a Bucket Filler at our early childhood centers, and, you know, the kids really get a kick out of being caught being good and celebrating that in the early, early childhood centers. In elementary, we do different things at different schools, but all around the same type of character education building. So at the Shawshin, we do Eight Keys to a Better Me. We have different enrichment programs that come in. We had Uch come in this year, and I think he also went to some of the, the north as well. And I know he's been at, I believe he was at Woburn Street one year as well. And they do all-school community meetings at different schools, where they are celebrating a different character trait, and the students maybe pick a challenge, such as, you know, donating food, or, you know, different things like that to help the community. Johnny the K is also a presenter, I know he goes to the Woburn Street, and the kids really get a kick out of him. There's different monthly bulletin boards and themes that different schools do, especially during Kindness Week. It's, it's like a little challenge, and the students can walk through the hallways and see the different kindness bulletin boards that are up, that their classmates put up. And to intermediate, Uch also has gone there, and the Wilmington High School SAD visits and presentations that take place, and the same type of thematic bulletin boards, you know, spreading the word about character education and friendship.
At the middle school, past events have included presentations by the Melrose Alliance Against Violence to students, also from the Middle Sex Partnership for Youth, which we partner with quite frequently, Staying Connected in a Wired World, that was a presentation both for students as well as parents, about the whole notion of cyberbullying and social media and etiquette and behavior online. We also had a visit last year at the middle school with the Wilmington High School Gay Straight Alliance, presenting to several health classes. And we've also in the past had the Traditional Academy of Karate, who's a frequent visitor to the district, and they have had a nice partnership with lots of schools in really doing some empowerment and self-confidence and confidence-building presentations with the students. At the high school, they have the peer leaders who've come in with an organization, Core Trainings, who's done training with them to sort of even do some female empowerment at the high school level. They have their student ambassadors, as well, it's a very strong high school mentoring program for the incoming freshmen. School, district-wide, you can see that we do an awful lot of community service projects, promoting gratitude as a value, and that really helps build the importance of that within our district culture. And even CARE is, is an extension of our district's programs, has had peer leaders from the Shawshin Tech come and visit over the summer for a special program, and they've also welcomed the Traditional Academy of Karate and to do presentations with the smaller groups of students. And so those partnerships with the community are huge for us, to help support the message across the district and to really strengthen and improve our culture. We wanted to speak a bit about our efforts moving forward and a lot of the things that we've been working on. I mentioned some of the subgroups that we've developed on the committee. So we are having a parent training and information module that I'll speak to about in a minute later in the presentation, and we have a team working on that to hopefully pilot that with a small group of parents by the end of the school year, to sort of walk them through some of the definitions in the bullying law and in the handbook language, so that they have a fuller understanding of the definition or the differentiation between teasing, bullying, and repeated harassment, so they can really follow through and understand those definitions. As a team, I put that in, in December of 2014, we attended as a team, the superintendent included, myself, Mrs. King, Mary Hood, and two other members of the committee at the Harvard Graduate School of Education, a school climate conference around equity issues and discipline and school climate improvement. So we expect to do some work together again to build our resources and go out and build our own training as a committee. We are completing an evaluation of the Second Step Curriculum, that's our current curriculum in place that we have for violence prevention strategies and bullying prevention, and we really wanna take a look from students' perspectives, staff perspectives, and parents, how effective is that curriculum? It initially started out as a curriculum to work with grades four through eight. Teachers were provided training, students were given lessons, and we really wanna evaluate the effectiveness and the consistency of that program, and whether or not we should be looking at another program, which is another group task, to sort of investigate other effective programs that are research-based, that show an impact in improving school culture and school climate. We also really need to start and have with regularity our school climate surveys. We have done them at the different levels in the past that are age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate for the elementary students and the middle school students and the high school students, but we really need to be doing that on an every-other-year basis and really matching the data from survey to survey to see if we are making gains in improving our school climate, and that students are feeling safe and comfortable and respected here in the schools. So we wanna have ongoing surveying to make sure that we can gauge how students are feeling about their school experience. Also, as a group, we've talked about having more visibility with our sort of new name as the School Culture and Climate, School Climate and Culture Committee. We really want to think about, in the fall, having some kickoff events that we would facilitate or sponsor. And we talked as a committee that because that Middle Sex Partnerships for Youth presentation was very successful, we thought about at ages six, grade six through 12, having that presentation with both parents and students attending together about the importance of online safe, social media behavior, and caring and kind social media behavior, as well as cyber safety and what cyberbullying is, and don't get caught doing that if you're online. So we really thought it would be powerful to have parents and students at that age level, grade six through 12, together to hear the same message and really foster that dialogue. As well as at the elementary and intermediate level, we talked about how much of an impact the presenter, Uch, has to the students when he comes. His message is strong about inclusivity and really making friends and giving everybody a fair chance. And the kids go home and they speak about it to their parents, and they're sort of buzzing about it, and we've had a parent presentation in the past before, but we thought it might even be having more of an impact of doing something together as a family night, and really being able to foster those conversations even at the lower levels. So that's what we hope for finishing off this year and moving into the fall, and our efforts will be going forward. The next two slides are sort of a sample for you to see the training module that we have in mind for parents, and then as an extension later on down the road for staff members with a little bit more information involved. But this is just sort of a sample question, and, and this really came about with Julie Kelly, who's one of our technology integration specialists now, and Katie Downer, a computer literacy specialist at the middle school. They really went through They really went through some of our documents and tried to make some important questions come to light that parents would need to know and walk away from a training. So it's sort of like an online quiz, I guess you could say. And you go through the questions. Purposefully excluding a person from activities is, A, my right, I can choose to exclude someone if I feel like it. Or B, bullying if it is intended to make someone feel bad. And so you have to click and answer. And when you continue on the next slide, it will tell you whether or not you answered correctly. And if you clicked the first one, my right, they tell you, not quite. This could be considered bullying if it is repeated and purposeful, that you're ostracizing someone or you're leaving someone out purposefully to humiliate or to make them feel badly on purpose. So it really takes them back to make sure that they reread some of the documents to understand the definitions. So it would be brief. It would hopefully take a parent maybe 10 to 12 minutes to fill out. But it would be something that we would encourage parents to go online and do as a district, to have them have more familiarity with definitions. So that's just a sample, and we are really thankful to Julie Kelly and Katie Downer. And we're in the process of hopefully fine-tuning it and making it something ready to pilot with about 10 to 12 questions and some documents and reading. They even had some videos, some snippets that were very brief, like under 30 seconds or 60 seconds, that they, somebody could watch a scenario and then be able to answer a question on. So it's quite involved, but it's something that we would like to try as a way to educate more parents.
I mean, I think the goal for this is it's for parents to do with your child at home. So it's to open up that line of communication. And it's okay if you answer the question long, because then you can talk about it. And so that's the goal, is to talk about these definitions, what they mean, and then have parents be able to communicate with their child about it and open up those chain of communications.
So the last slide in the presentation really is something that I think several of us, but I took away from the school climate conference that we went to back in December. And it really is a lot of things at work at once and really working together. And they're really intertwined. And that really is something that we took away from the conference. So climate change, students, teaching, learning, discipline, having it be fair and equitable discipline, a safe environment, equity across all areas as well as curriculum, because we talked about that violence prevention curriculum. All of these cogs are sort of working together for a common cause, and that's to keep a safe and positive school climate for all of the children here in Wilmington. And we recognize that we will be working alongside the PACs, the CPAC, the WEF, the School Wellness Advisory Council. And Superintendent Delai has formed a new Behavioral Health Task Force. And all of these groups will be working together to really make it a safe environment for students.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions?
I just have a clarifying question. With regards to the parent training and information module, you said that info will be disseminated to parents. How are you reaching parents? And you're saying that you're going to have some parents pilot the module. Are you asking parents to participate in the pilot? Or are you hand-chosing parents?
That's a great question. We haven't quite gotten there yet. I was going to reach out to the principals in the district to see if they maybe had a handful of people on their PAC or their school councils that would be willing, as parents of maybe students in various schools, that they might be willing to pilot for us. Because we're looking for feedback. Is this something that's doable with your child? Is this something that's realistic to take 10 minutes of your day? Is this something that we think parents will do if we send it out in a link or we offer it up on the website? So that's yet to be determined.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I was going to ask you a question about the parents, and I have no answer for this, but I've been very disappointed at some of the programs that we've put on over the last couple of years. And we've had maybe 14, 16 parents out of 1,000 people. And I don't understand where they are. I don't understand, you know, what more we could do to effectively bring more parents in. I just, I really don't have the answer.
Well, I think that's why we're thinking, because we've had some really successful literacy nights lately, and it's really bringing the parents in with the child. So that was part of our conversation when we were thinking of, what can we do with the evening events and how are we going to get parents here? And I think that, you know, parents work, you know, parents are working, and they want to be with their children at night too. So what better way to sort of keep that, you know, bring your child with you and have the experience together? So we're sort of trying to think in that way of how can we, what can we bring in that we can have parents and children be together and then have that conversation at home about different things that they're learning? So we're trying to think of some creative ways to do that.
I think clear communication with parents. And I know that it can be a bit different at all throughout the grade levels. And I think clear communication, especially with this onset, because I think this will be the determining factor as to how the committee then proceeds with the module and the other supports that you're hoping to build off of this. So, I mean, if you have to, two months out, every week, hey, by the way, this is coming up. I think it would be, you know, conducive to seeing your hard work and time already invested be productive and get back the results that you are looking to, you know, to capture.
Right. I agree. Clear and consistent communication, that would be helpful so that everybody sort of knows what we're doing, what we're hoping to accomplish, and why we want them there.
Even starting to get the PACs to get, start talking about this initiative early on so that it's not a nuance, that so many things happen, especially this time of year, that it could, it's easily
Lost in the shuffle.
Exactly. Exactly.
Could I also suggest, since there aren't a lot, I always wondered why we don't do this more often. We're basically treading new ground here. And there's no reason why you can't make your own, make your own program, and we could lend it out to other people around the communities. But I really feel confident that we have some excellent, excellent educators who could put together the program on their own after you look at what everybody has. And then you could be famous, you can go around to the other places and help them. But I really do think we should think about it. Because I really know we could do that. Probably might be more work than you want to do, but
Well, I think one of the things that we've heard from students, I've certainly heard it at all grade levels from kids, when conversations come up around bullying, bullying prevention, substance abuse, whatever the issue is, kids will tell you, students will tell you that it's more impactful if they hear it from other kids. So I think something like having high school students produce a video on, you know, empathy and conflict resolution, whatever the topic is, would be impactful to high school kids. And having middle school kids do the same would be impactful to middle school kids.
And I don't know how anyone else reacts, but when you read this part, Ms. McMinister, about the no-name-calling week in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, what a thing to have in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'm horrified. I had no idea we had that, but I think it's so sad.
Because every week should be no-name.
That's what we say to the, when we, that's why we sort of do the Kindness Week and we just incorporate, you know, all the great things that
All the gestures.
The things that we try to teach them to be good citizens.
Exactly. Any other questions? We're so glad that you came, and we really appreciate all the hard work you're doing. And we support you very, very much.
Much appreciated.
Thank you. Anything you need, get back to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Middle school schedule. And now we're going backwards for a minute under the old business, and we'll go to the middle school schedule.
Yes, we want to
Mr. Olson's here. Mr. Olson, would you like to just come up for a minute?
You want to join us?
No. We'll be quicker if you're right here looking at us. If this goes through, you've done, you've accomplished something that's been a while coming. So, you know, accolades here.
Yes, you know, you had a very thorough presentation from Mr. Olson at the last meeting. And as is your custom, we've had some time to think about it. I didn't receive any formal questions from the committee via email, but certainly I've asked Mr. Olson to be here in case there were still some remaining questions in advance of your taking a vote to approve the middle school schedule.
Do we have any, does anyone?
I was just going to share that after we had met last time, I came up with a few other questions. And I was wearing two hats, right? School committee and I have a sixth-grade student. And I emailed Mr. Olson. He was very kind to speak to me over the phone, so I got the answers that I needed. That was very helpful.
Mrs. Burns?
Kind of questions I may have been, if you don't mind?
Yeah, no, I can share. I didn't share with the group because I didn't want to open up a big discussion through email. But really, four main questions I had. One was, when will the kids be asked for their choices of options? Because if the goal is to have that schedule in hand before the end of the school year, there's a couple of things that they need to choose from. So when would that happen? And it sounds like it's going to be happening fairly soon, after April vacation, I think.
Yeah, either the first or second week right after April vacation. Should it get passed this evening?
All things considered. I also wanted to know when parents would be notified that their child might need some targeted reading support or any other academic support? And would you then assume that that child would have no time in their schedule for options? And that's actually not the case, because it's more of a fluid situation. I asked about the process for the enrichment for those kids that might be interested in it. And my final question is, had there been any discussion about batting an enhanced ELA class? Where we have the enhanced math class. What about the ELI side?
What was the answer to that one?
The answer was no, we have not had any discussion.
I'm sorry. Do you want to speak? I certainly don't want to. Because you know how I convey. I just want to simply say that I do appreciate the, I myself see the necessity of a change at the middle school for the schedule for a very long time. And I have to say, I think the way you presented it, I have to say, I feel very comfortable. I only would suggest, I've had a couple constituents reach out to me, nothing major, but inquiries, especially with regards to their children who suffer through anxiety of transitions especially. And that I do hope that maybe going forth this summer, prior to the beginning of the new school year, that once these students have their schedules in hand, they might have an opportunity, prior to the beginning of school, to go through their schedule, maybe walk through it prior to the start of school so they have some familiarity with how it's going to play out. I know some, there's some concerns with regards to my, my son is full of anxiety because of changing houses. And as much as I can recognize that, because of the, even if the child stays in the same house, people in that house could change. So I think I'm hoping that by having supports in place prior to the new school year, that it may abate those concerns about the house, which I think, which everyone is most familiar with. And I think that's where the change
I think you'll find that to be happening. And I've fielded a few questions regarding that already to individual parents as well, and I think alleviated some of their concerns. The other piece that's kind of important right now is the new principal coming on board. She may be visiting us tomorrow. We have a faculty meeting. We'll be talking about what our next steps are from here. And she certainly has to get on board, and I want her to feel a part of what's happening also.
Of course. I think that's a great idea. I just want to thank you and for the collaboration in creating this piece. I really want to appreciate your time and effort.
I just want to say that I appreciated your presentation. It was incredibly thorough, which I needed. I buy into the rationale and the logic behind it. And I'd offer up the motion that we approve the middle school's schedule as presented.
And I'd accept a second. Mrs. Brusad, all those in favor? Unanimous? Overdone.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Olson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We aren't either.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Okay, we're going back to old business, Superintendent's entry plan finding.
Yes. And we have reached the point where we're covering the last two of the six standards during our deep dive. The, I believe, yeah, I believe that this actually is connected directly to WCTV in terms of
Oh, okay.
and broadcast. But you guys can see. Can our audience see? Okay. So we have two remaining standards to cover this evening. The first being student supports, and the second one being HR and staff, human resources and staff development. There are five indicators under the student support section, and there are three indicators under the HR and staff development section. So starting with student supports, and the first indicator is around the access and equity. And so findings during the entry plan process were that the proficiency gap, and this is not news to folks here, the proficiency gap between high-needs students and non-high-needs students is fairly significant and has been persistent in Wilmington public schools. There are some policies and programs in place, but I think that we need to expand the programs that exist that focus specifically on closing this achievement gap. And policies obviously can be very helpful in establishing the framework for that work to happen. Efforts have begun to shift to more inclusive practice, but more time, more training, and more resources are needed to complete the shift to a true inclusion model, best-practice inclusion model for Wilmington public schools. Clear entrance and exit criteria for substantially separate programs do not currently exist, but they are in the process of being developed. It's the, one of the goals for Mrs. Hood, our administrator of special education. She's left us. A formalized structure for assessing post-secondary or career pathways is not well-established. Students and parents report a desire to learn about pathways at an earlier age. This is really about finding opportunities at the middle school level to engage students and inform students and parents about what different career pathways or college pathways exist so that as they begin, because as you know, particularly with enhanced math pathways and such, decisions need to sometimes be made at the middle school level about the course of study so that you're prepared for the pathway that you're interested in. In terms of opportunities, creating a strong commitment to closing the proficiency gap, I see this as a leadership task, that we all have a vision and that we have a very clear statement within our vision statement, that it really is about ensuring the success of all students and that all students can learn. Promoting a culture that's committed to the success of all students and a mindset that all students can learn. So once you have that vision, making sure that you're doing, you're promoting that culture in schools. Evaluating recommendations of our inclusion consultant and incorporating appropriate goals into school improvement and district improvement plans. We expect to get the report of findings from the inclusion consultant just after April break. So we'll have some time to kind of delve into that and share that with the leadership team and begin to determine exactly what that's going to look like over the next three to five years to shift to a true inclusion model. We want to provide time, resources, and training necessary to educate all stakeholders on inclusionary practices. I think for next year, what you're going to see is a strong focus on differentiated instruction. We need to really target our PD in that area so that our educators feel like they have the strategies necessary to be able to effectively do differentiated instruction, because that's a cornerstone for a strong inclusion environment, obviously. We want to introduce career pathways for students at the middle school level and reinforce those at the high school level and develop strong partnerships with business and industry to provide opportunities for students as well as educators to learn about career options and career pathways. So what we've been doing is stopping after each indicator and seeing if there's any questions, comments.
You tell us a little bit about what a formalized structure for assessing post-secondary or career pathways would look like? Is that kind of, is that the test where you take? And at the end, it tells you you should be a carpenter or?
And there's a lot of different, I mean, Naviance is a tool that we use that helps to assess some of that. There are other tools. There's actually a tool out there that assesses college and career readiness. So there are some assessments out there, some screeners and assessments that will help kids to be able to be more directed based on their own learning styles, interests, et cetera. that will help kids to be able to be more directed, based on their own learning styles, interests, et cetera.
So that would be, that would be a program we'd have to purchase?
We already use Naviance.
Okay.
The other assessments are sort of, really, they're not commercial assessments per se, they're different websites that have those types of tools available to be used and implemented.
Oh, sorry, I'll go this way, Mrs. Kell.
The findings of that, the, you relay that to the parents too, right? The parents will get to know the findings for that, for the early age.
For the inclusion piece? Yeah, what I think what we will do is that probably, once we share it with the leadership team and kind of plot out exactly what an implementation plan would be for making a shift and what that would look like, including professional development, any budgetary impacts, training, resources, staffing is, if there is an impact, run that, obviously run that through the school committee. Have conversations, introduce it to the CPAT, for instance, and then, you know, probably create an opportunity, maybe more as part of the district strategic planning process and the strategic planning reporting, use that as an opportunity, because this will be a very strong piece of that plan.
Yes, I was curious, first of all, I, in the more thorough report, the entry plan report, I have to say how much I am happy to, just how much I support the encouraging of alumni to come back to speak to students about career and college readiness and preparing for them, thinking about that. I love that peer discussion happening, and I think you get the best conversations in those type of forums. I also, I wanted to ask you again with regards to the exit and entrance criteria. I didn't know, is that an in-house criteria piece, or is that something that parents could access to see if their child fits into a program or is ready to leave a program? I just didn't know how that would be worked.
It's intended for our staff, so that as part of the meeting process, our staff who are sitting as liaisons have a really clear understanding of what the, what really the intent of these programs are, what type of student would benefit from those programs. It's really to direct our educators in a better way and our liaisons.
Parents side too, as to, they think, well, why isn't, why can't my child get into this program? And it's just having that, again, communication piece, like communicating well that the criteria is, as opposed to it doesn't meet the criteria, I guess, you know?
I would see it as being a document that's used as part of the conversation process.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to ask, in the gap, when we're talking about the gap, is there an area where it widens, or an area where it gets less, there's lesser gap? Or are we seeing this gap like start out slow and then widen?
So the gap, it really depends on what you're talking about, depends on what subject area you're talking about, what grade level you're talking about. In some places, the gaps are larger than other places. And it depends on whether you're talking about a sort of a proficiency gap in terms of the percentage of students that are in proficient and advanced versus needs improvement or warning, but also a gap in terms of student growth. So there's no sort of one answer. At the beginning of the year, I guess, and when we did the district improvement plan, and we showed the, and I think actually Dr. Brenham did a great presentation on MCAS and focused a lot on the schools and where those gaps were. And you saw that, you know, we had specific school, a grade level particular school that might have a really wide gap, and then it starts to narrow, so. But we use that information to try to really identify what specifically is going on. Which standard are they not learning, which skill are they not learning?
Right, okay, good, thank you. Any other? No, excellent.
The next indicator is educational continuity and participation. And our findings include that a majority of students in Wilmington come to school and stay in school for the duration of their K-12 education. So we don't have the same stability issues that other districts have, so we're fortunate for that. Procedures for tracking and monitoring student attendance exist, but student attendance is not routinely used as a criteria to identify at-risk students. We've just started to do that, so when we put together sort of our dashboards to identify at-risk students, we're not only looking at assessment data, but we're also using attendance data, for example, discipline data. That really is helpful in identifying students that might be at risk. Parents and staff report concern over the number of transitions that students confront in our district and the insufficiency of supports around transitions. We've got pre-K, we've got the transition from K to one, from three to four, from five, from five to six, changing buildings, so it's really important that we have solid supports in place. That includes everything from the way we do placements, how early we do placement, how early we get our schedules done, and schedules communicated to parents. And we're spending a lot of time with that. The goal this year is to have schedules out, for example, by June, so that they have the summer to do that and get into buildings and to, to Mrs. Burns' point, to make sure that there's that opportunity for kids, particularly kids who are anxious, to be able to get into their buildings and find their way around, so. A cohesive, comprehensive approach to behavioral health does not exist, and a significant number of parents report that bullying and drug use are an issue at some of our schools. In terms of opportunities, creating and implementing a formal system for monitoring student attendance and student discipline as measures of students' behavioral health, there are also some other, I should add, some other universal screeners around behavioral health, mental health, that the Behavioral Health Task Force will be looking at as well. Examine different options for minimizing transitions in the district, including school consolidation, alternative grade configurations, et cetera. That obviously is a long-term project, you know, it's something that's gonna happen right away. Develop and implement a cohesive strategy for supporting students during transitional years, and work to implement the behavioral health frameworks in our district over the next three years. You will be having, there's some additional opportunities as well, but you will be having a presentation in June from the Behavioral Health Task Force. Very excited about the work that's happening there. Other opportunities include examining research-based social-emotional learning curriculum and recommending high-quality, developmentally-appropriate curriculum. As you heard Ms. McMiniman state, they're looking at, they're evaluating second step, but they're also looking at other social-emotional learning curriculums to identify if there are more effective programs out there or other programs for different grade levels, because right now we're focused on four to eight with that second step program, but we'd like to really expand it down, age-appropriate program at the elementary levels, because we feel strongly that that's where you have to really build those foundational skills and that empathy and those emotional intelligence-type skills. Ensure that all bullying procedures and intervention plans are up to date and properly and consistently implemented. Again, that is in a goal of the, of the committee, the School Climate and Culture Committee, to do that on a bi- biannual basis. Examine the continuum of programs and services in place to prevent and address substance abuse in the school community. We've had conversations, we just had a meeting a few weeks ago with major, all the different department heads in town, to talk about how to ignite the efforts of the Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition, expand it, and what direction to go in. We've, at least at this point, established that that group will meet on a monthly basis, so that we at least are understanding and starting to learn about what is available through Wilmington Fire Department, what is the role and what's available through the Wilmington Police Department. So what are the schools doing to address this issue, so that we're all understanding each other and then hopefully figure out how to work smarter and not harder in this, what has become somewhat of an epidemic, particularly around opiate use, and we've heard about some tragedies recently with overdoses, opiate overdoses. I'll stop there.
Any questions? Mrs. Bonish?
So one of the things I know that was very effective for my children when it comes to this was having, having people come in and talk about their personal experience.
Yes, yes.
So I feel like that, that could happen a little bit more often.
Agreed.
Because I feel like every time, every one of, you know, every one of them saw someone who told their story, and, you know, it was so personal, they always had something to say when they came home. But then there's a long time in between them, and I just think that, that it could happen a little bit more often. That's just a suggestion I have.
Yeah, I would agree.
I know it costs.
No, but the students talk about that as well, and there are partners, we have a middle-six partnership for youth that you heard about, they offer programs, so taking advantage, not only can we send folks, but we are also entitled to use them, to bring folks here to Wilmington. We haven't really taken advantage of that this year. But I, I think the students would say the exact same thing, is that that was more impactful than perhaps seeing sort of a video of a situation that's sort of enacted, if you will, but it's much more powerful to hear from those folks, so. Not everyone necessarily agrees with that perspective, but I certainly do, and would like to see that happen more.
Any other questions? Come on. Okay, thank you.
And the next indicator is services and partnerships. And we find that there are services to support students' behavioral or mental health challenges out there, but they are limited and not well-communicated. We have a lot of other partners, external partners, we have a lot of internal things available, and we just need to do a much better job of connecting students in need, families in need, with those services, be they internal or externally provided. A curriculum exists to address bullying prevention, developing relationships, and dealing with conflict, but it's targeted at grades four through eight, and it's not necessarily implemented consistently. Regular surveys to assess students' attitudes and engagement in alcohol and drug use and other risky behaviors are not administered, to my knowledge. The Pride survey was done last year with sponsorship and financial support of the Wilmington Police Department, which we greatly appreciate. Prior to that, I believe it was several years ago, that the Youth Risk Behavior Survey was administered, and that those are the only two that I'm aware of happening in the last, say, ten years or so. A collaborative community effort to address substance abuse prevention in the community is in the developing stages. With respect to opportunities, develop stronger partnerships with community agencies to support students' behavioral and mental health challenges, and also obviously communicate about the availability of those services to our families in need. Administer the CDC's Youth Risk Behavior Survey on a regular basis and communicate results to our community. This is designed to be administered on a biannual basis. We were actually selected by DESE this year to be, to do a random sample at the high school. They use those random samples as their state benchmark, but we made the decision to also administer it to all, all students in grades seven through 11, and that will be happening in mid-May. Doreen Crowe is leading that effort with her School Wellness Advisory Council. She's putting together some communication that will be getting out to parents around what that involves, some sample questions of the survey. Parents will obviously have the opportunity to opt their children out if they so choose. But I think in the past, what I've seen in different districts is you tend to get very strong participation, and it gives you really great data on risky behaviors and where students are around those risky behaviors. I think it's really important data for us to continue to monitor. Continue collaboration with the Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition to implement a strong substance abuse prevention program, and to examine other meeting, means, including cares to support students' behavioral, social, emotional, and recreational needs.
Any questions or comments?
I'm sorry.
Yep, Mrs. Burns?
But the Pride survey, is that something that you, you would consider doing again? I know, if some, if I, I'm just, if I remember correctly, I thought it was something that was gonna be done biannual. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you-
The Pride survey, the reason why I would choose the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is because this, you get the data at the state level as well, so you have a point to reference. So you can compare how your district is doing and how your schools are doing, students are doing compared to the state. You don't have that with the Pride survey, so that's why I thought that the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which would be every other year.
Oh, okay, I didn't know, I didn't know that was an option every, every other year.
Every other year, correct.
Okay, forgive me, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, every other year, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
For our policy, should we be looking at our policy for the substance abuse? Like, should we have something, do we have a good policy for this, since we're trying to implement this? Should we look back?
That's a good question, I can certainly reach out to, to other districts, to MASC and others, and see if there's something that-
You know, maybe a stricter policy, maybe something?
Oh, I see, you're, you're, you mean around chemical health policy?
Yeah.
Okay, so the policy that's in place, I think, is pretty much aligned to what the MIAA requires. There are stronger chemical health policies out there with stronger consequences, as well as supports in place. So, for example, requiring students after so many incidents to actually be part of a treatment program or substance abuse prevention program. So I think those, those types of things would be good, and I, I think making sure that whatever opportunities that we have to have a captive audience, so athletes and participants in extracurricular activities as a requirement of participating, being, being, attending some sort of a meeting around that, where you're focused on prevention, but also helping them understand what the consequences are. In large measure, we also need to make sure that the parents are on board, because some districts have gone down this path, and, you know, sometimes if parents don't quite understand why it's so important to have those consequences and enforce those consequences, you're actually doing your child a huge favor by making sure they understand what the impact of that behavior is.
I was just gonna say that as a parent of high school, I would want my kid to have that, I would want my district to have something like that, because if my child is going down that path, you know, I would want the school to help me out and get him on the right path, so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to work with the policy subcommittee and start to have those conversations and begin to have a dialogue, and bring parents and athletes and students into those conversations as well, so that they understand, you know, and are part of the process.
And have it, you know, maybe even parents have to sign off on it too, you know? Like, we have them sign off on a few things, to know that this is what's gonna happen.
So the next indicator is around safety. The district commitment to student safety is very strong, and that's evidenced by the early adoption of the ALICE protocols. As I mentioned, Wilmington Public Schools was the first district in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to implement those security protocols, and we're very fortunate to have Lieutenant Sensabaugh here in Wilmington to support our efforts there. Recent investments in security systems at all buildings have occurred. Existence, we have the existence of district and school safety teams, and we have full-time SROs at the high school, the middle school, and a shared SRO between the two intermediate schools. The district's emergency response plan was last updated in 2003. Staff training on emergency procedures occurs, but we would like to see that expanded to deal with a broader array of threats. And so the opportunities we see are to provide necessary funding and support to revise or develop new safety plans for districts and schools. And actually, Mr. Rogiro and Mr. Straznik co-chair the District Safety Committee, and that has been a big emphasis of their work this year, and they will be presenting to you in May, so you'll hear a little bit more about the work that they've done this year around developing protocols for various types of threats that a district could face. We want to review emergency response plans annually with school staff, parents, students, and public safety. So we may look to, for example, perhaps the type of model that Ms. McMiniman and her committee formed, where do an online-type training for, for staff, so it's something that they can see each year, and something that administrators can run through with their staff during their opening staff meetings, for example, to keep it on the radar, if you will. And provide regular training to staff on crisis response and emergency management best practices. I'll stop there.
Any comments or questions?
I have a question, in your entry plan, so you've got plans on plans on plans, and they all work in different capacities. And I noticed that you shared that at the, an individualized school emergency plan does not exist. I'm a little kind of in a gray area, because I know that there are emergency plans that all the schools do recognize. And so I think that's what kind of tripped me up, per se, that there is a district safety plan for emergency response and clearance. Is that something that you'd be focusing on, or what we have in place, will that encapsulate the individualized schools if, let's say, the Wildwood was under siege or had a-
So the district emergency response plan would serve as the overarching framework, if you will, but at each school, what we'd want to make sure to do is, is to make sure that we had specific resources. So the floor plan of the school, for example, the evacuation routes, and just review that and make sure that those are all squared away, that we know the reunification and evacuation plans and routes, and that's what, when I say individualized, making sure those-
I appreciate that clarification.
Never even thought of something as simple as the map of the building. Especially if you had a substitute in that day or something, that would be, that's really interesting.
Can I, I have just one question.
Yes, Mrs. Bonish?
So it says staff training in the emergency procedures does occur regularly. How regularly is that? I'm just curious.
They, I know, Paul, you want to speak to them, I mean, I know they do the fire drills and evacuation drills and ALICE drills, but you probably have a better handle.
How often do they get the ALICEs?
Yeah, ALICEs, probably a couple times a year, I think earlier in the school year, and I think they do something a little bit later as well, with the staff, in the staff meetings. It's discussed, as well as the, you know, as Superintendent mentioned, we have a school-based safety teams. safety teams, which include some teachers and administrators from each school, as well as a district-level team. So a lot of that's brought back in sheer, what comes out of that meeting, sheer with the school-based teams as well.
And the last indicator under student supports is school health and wellness, and we find that we have a sufficient number and highly qualified staff to address the health needs of students at all levels, including a full-time nursing staff, so and a nurse at every building, and health educators across all grade levels. The school nutrition program is fiscally healthy and compliant with all regulations. A significant percentage of parents report a desire to see healthier food options for school lunches. Some parents report that more could be done to ensure the safety of students with life-threatening food allergies, and the practice of establishing and monitoring individual student health and wellness goals is in the development stages. So with respect to opportunities in this area, we are looking to evaluate the health curriculum offered at all levels to ensure that it's leading to intended outcomes. Administer survey to parents, staff, and students regarding school lunch program offerings and get a better idea of exactly what types of options that they're looking for. I will say that our school lunch, what's interesting about school lunch, when you talk to students, and Kate and I both had the opportunity to participate in the middle school principal interviews, and the student's number-one issue was around school lunches, but actually, it wasn't what you think it was. It's things like yuck whole wheat pasta and yuck whole wheat bread. So, you know, we have to sort of tease out the issues and determine, is this, you know, because obviously, we have regulations, federal regulations, that we need to be in compliance with around what we serve, and I think there's been a change to some healthier food options, and sometimes doesn't have the same taste, if you will, when you don't add the salt and the butter and the cream and such. We want to examine our allergy guidelines and ensure that there's adequate protection of students at all levels. We took the step this year in response to some of the concerns of eliminating the sale of peanut butter and jelly sandwiches at the middle school. I'm sure you got lots of feedback about that. And we are looking at extending the allergy-safe classroom procedures that we have in place at the early childhood center across all elementary grade levels, and Doreen and her team are working on that currently. We also want to identify and evaluate tools that are available to measure and monitor students' physical, behavioral, social, and emotional health, and use that information to identify students that are at risk in any of those specific areas.
Stop. Any questions or comments? No? All set, and thank you.
So moving on to the next standard, which is human resources and staff development, the first indicator being staff recruitment, selection, and assignment. And we find that the district lacks a well-articulated vision and processes for recruiting, hiring, and retaining diverse, highly qualified staff. I think it's really important to have that type of vision in place. Hiring, selection, and assignment are loosely linked to school improvement goals. Formalized guidance on recruiting, hiring, and selection has been, has not been provided to administrators, and opportunities for exemplary staff to take on leadership roles exist, but it's limited. In terms of opportunities, we'd like to develop formal written guidance for administrators in the recruiting, hiring, and assignment of qualified educators, and developing a guide to effective recruiting, interviewing, and selection processes. And this includes everywhere, everything from how you advertise a position to what questions you ask of candidates, to how you go through a process that would actually vet those things that you would want to look at. So perhaps you ask an educator to provide a copy of a lesson plan, perhaps you actually ask them to deliver a lesson, but using some, you know, best practices around recruitment and selection of candidates, and evaluate ways to improve retention of high-quality teachers, as well as build and leverage their leadership capacity for those exemplary teachers that we have in the district. All right. Next one, supervision and evaluation. So the district, as you all know, has adopted and implemented a very comprehensive and aligned educator evaluation system, and we have Dr. Burnham to thank for that. She's been the lead, really, in implementing educator evaluation system and has done so extremely effectively, especially when I can see other districts have struggled, and we've been able to provide really clear guidance to our evaluators, as well as our educators, that has led to a solid implementation process for Wilmington. More work can be done, I think, to calibrate evaluation ratings between buildings, and instructional rounds and other types of things are designed exactly to do that, so that what, what one administrator is seeing as good instruction is similar to what another educator is seeing as good instruction and evaluating as such. Administrators and educators report that the new evaluation system has led to meaningful reflection and dialogue with an overall level of satisfaction so far. And there is some apprehension around the implementation of district-determined measures and student feedback components of the evaluation system. That's not just a Wilmington thing. Opportunities include providing opportunities for administrators and staff to review the evaluation rubrics, really dive into them and unpack the standards, and start to understand what is meant and the various elements that are part of that evaluation rubric, and discuss what they look like in practice. What do those elements look like in practice? Continue to provide professional development and collaboration time for teachers to strengthen their professional practice and student learning goals. And it takes time to develop strong, smart goals. We're, this is the second year that Wilmington has gone through this. I expect that year after year, with more practice and a better understanding of, of data and looking at student work, that we'll just improve the quality of those goals as we move forward. And support educators around refining, implementing, and tracking common assessments and using data to impact instruction. The district-determined measures are common assessments, and I think, you know, the district, again, under Kate's leadership, has done a great job in pulling together some fantastic common assessments. As you know, I've shared with many of you that DESE has put some alternative proposals on the table around measuring educator impact. We're gonna do a presentation for you on April 29th, so you see what that looks like. I think it's exciting that there's these options on the table, and I think that some of those options will, again, help to strengthen student learning goals for educators. And we want to support educators around refining, implementing, and tracking, did I just say that, and using, tracking common assessments? Yeah, so that the tracking piece is another thing, is finding a data tool that we can use to help us manage all of the data that we have access to. We have a lot of data. In order to really take it from information to knowledge to actionable, you know, knowledge, you really have to be able to manipulate the data, analyze the data quickly. And we've been looking at various tools to do that, and to the extent that it has a budgetary impact, you'll be hearing more about that, too.
Right now, is all that data held in, like, one computer, or...
Right now, that data is in multiple, there's multiple assessments. There's Excel spreadsheets, there's commercial assessment databases, like Ames Web being one of them. MCAS data is housed at the state, you know, in their, in their data warehouse.
But for us, is it housed here as well?
We can, we pull the data into our systems, and so we are looking at a data tool that would actually allow us to aggregate data from all these different systems into one tool and very quickly, you know, sort, filter, manipulate, analyze that information.
Okay, thank you.
And finally, last but not least, staff development. We find that professional development priorities are established with staff and administrator input and are loosely connected to student performance indicators. A lot more of that has been happening in the last year or so. Professional development offerings targeting specific strategies to address proficiency gaps have happened, but they've been limited, so we need to spend more time there. Targeted job-embedded learning has not been a major focus of the district. Professional development opportunities for support staff have been limited and not targeted to their specific needs. And by that, I mean, for example, educational assistance, administrative assistance. Reliance on Wilmington University to address district-wide curriculum and instructional initiatives has limited the widespread adoption and effective implementation of some of these programs. So with respect to opportunities, we look to ensure that our annual professional development plan reflects needs based on student data, teacher goals, and improvement goals. And I think to that end, we will look to continue the practice that we began this year of delaying the rollout of the professional development plan until we have had the opportunity to establish those improvement goals, so that then we can connect that professional development to those specific goals. I think that was helpful to us this year to have that extra time and not put professional development ahead of the goal-setting process. Identify professional development needs of support staff and provide more meaningful, targeted, differentiated opportunities for those support staff. Evaluate ways to incorporate more peer observation, collaboration, and instructional coaching into the school day. So when we talk about job-embedded professional development not being a focus, it's not that people don't agree and want to do that. We don't have a lot of instructional coaches. We don't employ an instructional coach model, so looking to do more of that, and whether the coaches be titled instructional coaches, or whether they be exemplary teachers who we can pull from classrooms or push teachers into those classrooms to be able to observe each other and identify those best practices, so that they can implement them as well. And then to ensure appropriate pervasive training when new curriculum programs or instructional strategies are implemented. And we've already shifted to this, you can see that in the implementation of the Envisions program. We've dedicated a significant amount of professional development, starting this year. The, the whole day, October, In-Service Day next year, will be focused on the Envisions program for the elementary level, so knowing that when you're pushing out something like that's, that's that systemic, that you've got to really bring all administrators and educators into the process of professional development.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Bruce, I...
Just gonna say, as, we've been looking at this for our last three meetings, I am so grateful that we did it this way and we chunked it, because when I first saw this, and as I have said a couple of times, it takes me a while to digest it, and I have to read it and visit it a couple of times, and even, even now, I'm still a little overwhelmed. Like, there's a lot of opportunities on our list. And I guess the next step would be figuring out what to tackle.
And to that end, what we've done as a district leadership team is we've begun to do that work. We've had a couple of meetings of where we've sort of tried to, to filter, if you will, to identify, to use the language that we've been using in the new superintendent's induction program, to identify the big rocks. And that the big rocks, they actually, I'll give you the visual, so they had a fishbowl and a bunch of rocks, and all the rocks wouldn't fit in the fishbowl. So the real, you know, key question is, what rocks do you address? Which ones do you do? So that's what we've been trying to do, what are the big rocks? And those become your strategic objectives, and from that follow your strategic initiatives. And then you have to be bold and courageous enough to stick with that agenda and not let other things sideline you, detract from that. If that's what you agree, or the things that you should be spending your time, energy, and money on, then that's gonna be the focus for that time horizon that you're looking at.
I believe that has been one of our weaknesses, that where I came from, and when I first came on the school committee, I think we do really well, and we get something started, and then this comes along. And so instead of making, we just push this aside, and we're now working on this, and I think we never carry through and finish. Just what you said, be bold and stick to it. I think that's, that's really important.
And it's very difficult when priorities come into play, and that's, I think, where we get sidetracked. Well, we've gotten this far with the part of a plan and then, but this priority needs to start, get started, blah, blah, blah. That's my interpretation of how sometimes things kind of roll out and go awry.
It's the state that keeps pushing those things on us, and it's not us trying to change it. It's, we have one more thing, one more kind of test.
And a very short timeframe in which to execute it, so...
Exactly. And I'll never look at the word opportunities again and think the same way. How did that turn into this word? It's so interesting.
I, I do, I am optimistic and encouraged by the recent willingness of DESE to come out with this proposal around measuring educator impact. They, they are strategically getting away from the term DDM, some level maybe become a bit of a four-letter word, and focus on common assessment, which I think is right, because that's really, and when you look at the work that way, you're not focused on just compliance with the educator evaluation, but when you're thinking, common assessment is a good thing, and, and high-quality common assessment is the way to go. And so when you're looking at it that way, then it just becomes something that's supporting the good work you're doing, because we all do believe that we need, we could do a much better job in being very targeted in our assessment practices. But it did with all the DDMs, it, it's become a little burdensome, so the ability to kind of take a step back will be very helpful, I think, to our staff and administrators.
Any other questions? This was a massive piece of work, and we truly appreciate what's gonna lead to how it summarized everything, and you've done everything in a very positive, where the weakness is our way. And we appreciate that, because a lot of hard work went into the, getting our school community to where it is. And everybody is always looking for the best of how it will work, and so you saw the best and even in the weaknesses, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going back to old business letter C, the 2015, 2016 calendar.
Yes, when we went through and counted up the days, we realized that initially, we had the calendar, the last school day is the 21st, and we would have shorted ourselves by a school day, which the state doesn't really like when you do that. So we just want to... We want to revise this, we've revised this calendar, so that with the use of all five no-days, which we hope will never happen again, that we will end school on June 22nd. So that's the correction.
Did you want to vote on that for the last day, or are we gonna wait?
I think...
We usually wait a little.
Oh, in terms of, this is for the 2015-16 calendar?
Right.
So we're just asking you to revote next year's calendar. In terms of the last day of school for this year, we'll do that on the 29th.
Okay. All right, then we're on, on to... Oh, so we are gonna vote that?
For next year.
Okay, yes. Go ahead, Mrs. Grant.
I recommend to move to approve the middle school schedule as presented. Excuse me, I mean, the, oh, sorry. You said go back, and I went a little... I make a motion to approve the school calendar, 2015, 2016 calendar, as stated.
Okay, do we have a second? Mrs. Bonish? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, thank you. We're on to new business. School climate, school choice, letter C, school choice.
And you have a memo in your packet that this is an annual item that the school committee is required by law to vote on. Obviously, it's a challenge here in Wilmington, given class sizes, don't have a lot of available excess capacity in terms of classrooms, and so it's, it would be difficult for us to participate in school choice.
Okay, we have the, the motion here. Would someone like to do the motion? Mrs. Grant?
Make a motion to move that the Wilmington School Committee vote not to participate in the state's school choice program because of lack of available space to accommodate out-of-town students.
Second, Mrs. Carroll? All those in favor? Unanimous, Kim. Thank you. All right. D, FY15 current financial report.
And I'm gonna turn this one over to Mr. Rogiro.
Thank you. In front of you is a financial report as of March 31st, 2015. And you can see at this, on March 31st, we had a balance of $230,000 in the black. Much of that will be used up as we come down the home stretch in the fiscal year, but we will, in the year, in all positive, in the black.
You said to make a slight motion. It's 230... Oh, $1,000, okay.
Yeah, 230,000.
Okay, sorry. Correct myself. Quiet.
We wouldn't look so calm if it was 2015.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Thank you for the explanations, they're, they're very helpful. Okay, we'll move on. And a bid for student transportation.
And again, Mr. Rogiro, and we will need action on this. We didn't craft a motion, so someone's gonna craft it, wrap it on the fly here, but I'll let, Paul take this one.
Thank you. We went out to bid for yellow bus transportation. Three years ago, when we went out to bid, we revamped the whole bid document, so we used the revamped document as well. We sent it out to about 12 different transportation vendors. We received a bid from North Reading Transportation, that's our current transportation provider. They've actually been very good to Wilmington. I think they're fair, their pricing is right in line with what is out there as well. We are a prevailing wage community, so sometimes that has a, you know, the wage rates that the bus companies have to pay their employees, kind of impacts, depending on what community you live on, those rates are different. So, as I said, they've been a pleasure to work with. I don't think we've ever had any problems with them. I don't think we've ever had any problems with it. If any issues come up, we've contacted them directly, and they, you know, dealt with it in a timely manner. So we're kind of, we are happy with the, the pricing here with North Reading. So the motion, which I apologize for not putting on the bottom here, would be to give the contract to North Reading for the next three years, which would be FY16, 17, and 18. One note I will make, in the bid documents, we did put two potential option years to get pricing, and in order to enact the option years, we'd have to go to town meeting to have them vote to authorize us to give a, to use those option years. But we wanted to get pricing anyway, out for, for five years. But right now, this is a three-year contract, and if we decide to, if we want to go, then we would kind of have to go to front of town meeting for that.
Did you hear that, Mrs. Burns?
I did hear that.
Did you hear the motion?
No, I have a question. For the upcoming fiscal year, do you remember how much you kind of guesstimated? You knew that there was going to be an increase coming down the pipeline with regards to this? How, how much did you guesstimate with regards to the actual?
When I look at the, the document you got, the, the pricing is about 921, 922,000 for the yellow buses, including athletics, and the budget is 930,000.
Okay.
The FY16 budget.
Oh, good, okay. And so, and this is just the yellow buses? Or does this impact the vans who?
It won't impact the, the minivans, our drivers. They're, they're not part of North Reading Transportation, the town, the school employees.
No, no, I'm sorry. NRT also transports our students who are at district placements via vans? I didn't know, that's encapsulated in this contract?
That's through the SEAM Collaborative. We, we work with them, we have a contract through them with North Reading, a bunch of communities.
Oh, okay.
It's North Reading Transportation, but.
Right, I mean, but they dispense students throughout the, you know, the area. Oh, I didn't realize that, okay.
Yeah, it's coincidental that they have the same provider through their bid process.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarity.
Kim, did you hear the motion?
Recommended motion would be to award the transportation bid to North Reading Transportation for the fiscal years FY16, 17, and 18.
Will entertain that motion? Mrs. Burns, thank you. Do we have a second? Mrs. Carroll? Second? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, our next item of business is public comment. Good evening, Mr. I'm going to have you identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Kevin Donald, resident, taxpayer. I just have a handout for everybody. It does pertain to the budget.
Can we talk about budgets? I have to say, it's pertaining to the budget.
We have, we're not talking about budgets this evening, Mr. McDonald. I will, can you please give it to Mrs. Kane first and foremost, before you disseminate the question?
Okay, this is not, we can give this back. Thank you. This is not relative to anything that we're doing, other than talking about.
Yeah, I just wanted to give that to you, but I wanted to talk specifically to the agenda. I guess I'll start out with what Mr. Rogiro just spoke about, the, the bidding for the transportation. Mr. Rogiro, can you tell us?
Excuse me, this is not going to work. You cannot come here and start asking questions of the people on the board. You have to go through me.
I'm, I'm sorry.
And I have to determine whether it's appropriate.
All right, I'm sorry about that. I'll go through you.
Okay. What would you, what would you be asking about, this one?
Questions relative to the bid for student transportation, since it's on the agenda tonight. Mr. Rogiro, first of all, it's important to recognize that the town of Wilmington has to comply with the Mass General laws regarding procurement.
Which we did.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what, Mr. Rogiro mentioned that he sent out a request for bids to 12 different vendors.
Right.
Can you tell us what the bids came back on from those other vendors, Mr. Rogiro?
Excuse me, but we're in charge of that, and we didn't ask that question, so.
I'm asking it, because it's on the agenda, and I'm questioning whether or not we're in compliance with the public procurement laws, and.
Why, what would make you even ask that question? What, what information was not given or given?
Okay, I had the opportunity to speak to a former state procurement officer, and he mentioned that if you send out requests for bids to a certain amount of people, you have to send it out to everybody that actually bids on that particular item. So my question, my question.
This is hearsay. Do you have this, this gentleman here with you?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to inform the board that you may be in violation of the procurement laws.
That, that's one of the reasons we have an attorney.
And excuse me, Mr. Rogiro?
Can I just, we advertised and we'll sign goods and services bolt, and we were contacted by 12 companies, and we sent the bids out to those particular 12 vendors.
And are, are we going with the lowest bidder?
Yes, we are.
The other comment that I had was relative to the out-of-state field trip. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there are 16 students going on the trip?
There are 16 students.
And what was the total, total cost of that?
It, it is not a cost to the system. It's not a cost to the taxpayer. It's a cost to the parents of the students. So we, we don't have anything to do with the cost.
That's great, that's great. And the other comments that I have were relative to athletics and the viability of facilities that are relative to athletics. And I want to specifically talk about scheduling in the school, and I wanted to ask the board.
Scheduling of athletics?
Scheduling of classes, scheduling of athletics. But my focus is on really athletics, because I actually have an article at town meeting relative to building two ice hockey rinks at the Yentow Farm. And I, I wanted to ask the school committee if you have ever entertained the notion of having athletics and activities at the beginning of the day and starting the school day later for the purpose of.
No, we have.
You've never entertained that?
No, no.
Would you ever consider putting that on the agenda for a discussion and a hearing?
At this point, I don't believe any member is wanting it to be for discussion. No.
I'm not talking about tonight, but I'm just, I'm requesting it in the future for the purpose of identifying the possible need to do something different than what we're doing for the viability of the survival of buildings, for example.
Could I stop you right there for a minute? Bottom line here is, we cannot make those kinds of changes. It's like, people have talked about making a change from February vacation and just having one in March. That would be a statewide change that would have to be made. With athletics, it would have to be statewide, because if we're the only ones who have our kids doing athletics in the beginning of the day, and the rest of the state is at the end of the day, we're not doing athletics. So no, it's nothing we would think of, because other people in the state are not thinking of it, so.
Are you saying that would be against the law?
No, it wouldn't be against the law. It just wouldn't be what we would do. No one would do it, because there'd be no one for them to play their sports with. Our kids would be out, who would they play sports with? Everyone else is in school.
Well, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to get at is taking a look at it and having a hearing, and maybe even bringing in other representatives from other school districts. For example, let me just.
I think part of the problem, no, let's not go. We're not going into that discussion. I don't care about the sample, the example right now. We have a lot of things to do to keep our school system working, and we don't go out looking for things that really are irrelevant and that we couldn't even possibly think about doing. And that's one thing we could not possibly think about doing, for the reason I stated. No one else would be doing it. So our students would have nobody they would be playing against. So do you have another question? Because we're not talking, we are not talking about athletics in that way.
Well, I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm getting at, since athletics was on the agenda tonight, that I'd like to see the board reach out to other communities and see if they would be open for that. For example, if the, if the ice arena is charging $325 an hour.
Stop, excuse me.
See, I, I know, excuse me, I don't interrupt you, so I'd just like to be heard.
I've seen you do this at all the other meetings you're going to, and you're not going to do it in here. Don't interrupt me, and I won't interrupt you unless you're way off base, which I'm telling you, you're way off base. That's your thought, but you are, and we're not going to discuss it. I heard enough of your statement to know that we are not going to discuss it. The answer is no. We would not think of bringing that up. No one here would think of bringing that up. It's, it's not something that would ever be tenable here, and we're not going to spend our time working on something. Why would we go to other communities and work on this? It's, there's so much more content in the classroom, which is what is our main concern.
Yeah, the kid, the kids might be more prone to be driven to an activity in the morning rather than going, when they're half asleep, going to their first class.
I really don't even know what to say at this point.
I, I, you don't need to say anything.
Okay, good. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, I do.
Because, just, you know, excuse me, I forgot to tell you to, we have five minutes for each person who comes for public comments, so I think we've probably got a minute left.
Okay, well.
So pick your best one.
Okay, well, there has been some slanderous comments made about people on an appeal costing the town money. I put in a public record request, and they've been able to produce nothing.
That's with the sport of selectmen, and you know that, and you are not bringing that up yet.
I put a public record request into the superintendent, and I asked, I asked specifically for a complete itemized list of all your costs for your school budget, and I've, I've gotten no response from that, okay? We are actually paying $18 million of interest, which the majority of that is from bonds for the school. We have $61 million in the bank, and what I'm concerned about is that I'm finding that other.
Excuse me, I don't know that any of this.
Excuse me, what I'm finding out is that other requests for appropriations are way over than the actual amount, and they're taking that extra money and putting it in the bank. And then we're paying $18 million of interest.
You are not giving accurate information. You need to stop, and your five minutes is up.
Everything here is from the budget book. Every single thing here is from the budget book.
Excuse me. I don't know who you think you are. You call me names on an email you send to me.
What was your name?
You call me for dictator. So here I am, I'm being the dictator. Because we don't put, people from the, the town, don't come on, this is, let me start again. This is our private meeting that we hold in public, because we want to be transparent for the community. It is our, we have the board of directors to the school system, but it, just like, help me.
Here's, here's the difference, Kevin. I think you know this. This is not a public hearing. You don't have a right to be on the agenda. This is a meeting for the school system by the school committee. It is not open for you to come in here and, and commandeer the meeting. That's not what it's for. Your time is up.
You're considering as public minutes, public comments.
Public comments, absolutely.
You need to probably refresh yourself with the civil rights of a person in, in